A really special evening. We're honoring a lot of people here, teachers of the year and retirees. I want to talk about the retirees really, really briefly because I know the principals are going to talk about them as well. It is so hard to replace the institutional knowledge that is going to leave here this year. I can hire some really smart people, good-looking people, people who do a lot of things, but I cannot, I cannot replace the institutional knowledge and the years of experience that these people do. It's absolutely impossible and it makes them all special. So, I appreciate you. So, some of these retirees are here, some are not here, so we are going to start in no particular order, so principals just be on your toes. Ms. Ruth Meyer.
So, hello everybody. So, very fortunate to have worked my career with Ruth for many years. There's a special thing that we do where I kind of like asked her, I said, you know, my former district used to have a thing where the culinary arts teacher cooks for our students and staff during teacher appreciation. And we're trying to figure out a name, and then we came up with Biner's Dining. She creates a menu, our students put it into action. It was in front of the house, back of the house. It was a really special moment because our students were able to give back to our teachers. And then she added things to it, like special messages, so that every teacher had a message. They came in, they were asked their word, they came down, they sat down, they retreated. One year we added the violinist.
Right.
The sports help helped us out with that. We're violinists, and so they came in. And the reason why I tell you this story is, it's really special to be able to really make an impact. And this was teacher appreciation, right? But she put herself aside and she stepped up and she really contributed to a special thing for art teachers, not just one year, she was all over that program. The early childhood programs, her contributions, back in the day, right when we had the students coming in, that was always fun, right? Yeah. And then when we changed it up and we had our students go down to the middle school and elementary schools to work with our students there. She's given so much to our district, to our school. To me personally, I want to thank you very much for all our contributions here. Thank you.
So, on behalf of the district and also from our PTO, thank this fellow, there's a card, it's on this here. All right? All right, so, Jane?
Yeah. When we talk about institutions, right, I'm very fortunate, once again, I have another person that has really made an impact with our community. And one of the most special moments I can really think about was one of the last concerts, right, our winter concert, where students came back, alumni came back. And then we had a special ceremony downstairs, both Jane and our cafeteria. And you can see the generations of students that she's worked with, that she's made an impact on, and that can't be replaced. We're very fortunate to have the alumni come back, who was one of Jane's former students, to take over, keep this tradition going strong. And with regard to everything she's ever done, and one thing I would bring up, Jane is math certified, so I was always threatening her when we were trying to find a bad teacher. I did not pull the trigger on that one, but it was always something I had in the back pocket just in case. But Jane, everyone knows you, and everyone here in the studio respects you so much, so I want to thank you so much for all your contributions to our students. Thank you. Okay. Where's Dave? Yes, Dave, you have to take the photo. We did change it up last year, I think we just give cards for individuals, but, again, I feel like I broke a record with regard to... He likes when you talk about, we talked about retirement dinner, and also at the, I think it was the athletic or academic awards. One of those, mentioned how much he likes to get hugged, so when you are done today, they make sure to give him real strong embraces. Appreciate that. But no, seriously, he really dedicated his life to Milford. And we are the better for it. We were fortunate enough to have staff that have been impacted by him, like Ray Sutie next to him, Hershey, everyone within the history department, and all of us, right, all of us have been impacted by his decisions in a positive way, and students at Milford are a perfect example of that. So, when you think about like an institution, think about what's really important about Milford High School, Dave has always put that before front. So, I want to thank him for his leadership, I want to thank him for all his contributions, and I also want to thank him for the influence upon our department that will carry on the messages and the things he's taught us. So, thank you.
All right, Mrs. Torrey, please come up. Mr. Angelino, the retiring.
All right. So, we've had like three Joe shows to celebrate Mr. Angelino, I don't know if you know, but Mr. Angelino has been like a life force at Gibbs for a very long time. And he is a fun colleague who is always up for whatever crazy task I may be putting him to, even if it's like 30 seconds before. I like to get really great ideas like a half hour before we're going to execute it. And Joe is like one of those people, I know, I'm like, Joe, can you just help me figure out how to do this? And he's always in. But with, in all seriousness, the children, we celebrated Joe at an assembly this week, and they serenaded Mr. Angelino with his favorite song, like Earth, Wind &amp; Fire, that has something to do with the 21st of September. And I checked the calendar, Joe, the 21st of September is a Sunday, so you can party all you want. You don't have to get up on Monday. So, congratulations and thank you for having me.
We're going to shift to teachers of the year. So, teacher of the year. It's really a prestigious award because you cannot hide from your colleagues. That's really important. When you go to work every day with someone, and are working in the school every single day with someone, teaching children, meetings, working with the principals, you cannot hide. So, to be recognized by your peers is like this supreme acknowledgement.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
We do have one more retiring.
Who?
I'm sorry. Ms. Trento.
Ms. Trento, here.
There she is.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Trento. Mr. Angelino was blocking you. I apologize.
Sorry, it took me a minute, Ms. Trento, to realize it.
Oh.
So, I just wanted to recognize Denise. Denise is new to Gibbs this year. Where were you before Gibbs?
Uh, D E O.
D E O, okay, so Mr. Delala, do you want to come up here too? Like, come on. See, I like bless his... Your mom's okay. So, I just really, so Denise came to our school for the first time this year, and I have talked to her about this numerous times, but I'm happy to do this in this public forum. Denise comes to work every day with the biggest smile on her face. So, her husband drops her off in the morning, and he's right, and they have their little like morning goodbye, and then she just jumps out of the car, and she's just always ready, no matter what the day is going to bring her. And some days, she knows it's going to be challenging. And so, I just, I've appreciated your, just your willingness and your positivity, and just, I wish I would have had to have served us longer. But you will visit, I'm sure, or maybe not, but...
So, Ms. Trento worked at our break day program at the grammar school for quite some time, and Ms. Torrey's right, she came on board and she was there every single day with a smile, but even more importantly, there is a just intelligence and kindness to Ms. Trento when dealing with the little ones that really, really impacts, you know, everyone around her. When she was in the room, the staff was happy. When she was in the room, the kids were happier, and you brought that to our kids every single day. And I really, really appreciate you all.
I lied, I have one more thing.
There's a lot of lying.
So, it's kind of like a retirement, but it's more so just stepping down. We have been very fortunate as a district to have such a special person guiding us both on the board and as a parent, but also as the president of our PTO. So, Stephanie Crawford, Stephanie Gabbard, for the position. I got choked up. I have had a really good run of presidents of the PTO. PTO is so special because, you know, it fills in those places where either the board can't or we can't, and really steps up, and they always have the students' best interests in mind, the staff's best interests in mind. And she's made me look good for a number of years, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank her. She'll still be around, she may still help me out, we still quote her, but giving up that leadership role. She already has another president set up, she has the board ready for me already, and I'm very, very thankful, very appreciative, and I just wanted to, we didn't get a chance to do it at the academic awards, so I wanted to acknowledge Stephanie Crawford, the Helping Hands Award. This is something that goes out to members of the community that do way, way more than anybody else does, and not for any other reason but the value for our students, so thank you so much.
Any other retirees? Ms. Trento, I apologize again, I was so focused on Mr. Angelino and his chair. So, teacher of the year, I'll go back to what I said. You can't hide from your colleagues, that's where we left off, is this supreme acknowledgement. And I think it's really important to acknowledge teacher of the year, so you understand how it works. Teachers are nominated via Google form with a little description, a committee meets, a pretty big committee, and it's a long meet. And Mrs. Doc has a really nice job organizing it, everybody gets feedback about every single candidate, and then blind determinations are made, so there's no conspiracies or anything like that. It's like very true acknowledgement of these people and the teachers of their efforts. So, we'd like to call the first one, special education teacher of the year. Happy to see Patrick here, her son, who I taught a long time ago, I still maintain a relationship, Mrs. Westergaard.
Only been here a short while, but we've spent a lot of time with these teachers, a great job for our 18 to 21 program, and transitioning them very well from high school to 18 to 21, and then we just had a graduate last Friday, who's our first graduate completing the program at 20.
At 20.
Advanced, she's an advanced work for us, so she's amazing, congratulations.
I'm going to jump in as well, because Mrs. Corn has only been here a short time, and so my introduction to Mrs. Westergaard was actually to Patrick a long time ago, and she prefers to be in the shadows and not acknowledge, and will just do her job, and has built a program, correct? You've been with it a long time, from the beginning.
From the end of the night, dear.
Has built a program that we're still trying to expand, and I was coming every Monday pretty much, because every Monday they do this little slideshow of what the kids did over the weekend, which is great to see, and it's a really nice little community, and a great staff that worked with them, and it's just a nice, deep breath, and the culture that she has created there is wonderful. The kids, they have their needs, but they have grown so much even from September until now when I see them. And every time I walk in there, we walk in there, we feel like rock stars because they're excited to see us, so we should go there more often, because we don't get that much. But I appreciate you always willing to listen, give advice, talk to you, and just the amount of work you put in for your great team. Mrs. Giantino.
So, this is super easy. Warren is quite simply the best. You know, I always say that Burke was the best, I get to say Beck was on the line, and it is no small feat that you would be nominated of staff, like so many other teachers. But Warren is fun, super smart, so incredibly capable, and she's always present. She's present a thousand percent every single day. I would say she's one of the three people in the building that knows every child as well as I do, and I don't say that lightly. She, she's willing to take a challenge, she reads our best, she's our president cheerleader, by the way. She runs a March Madness basketball extravaganza where the kids are doing like their math facts and they're all playing, and she makes announcements over the radio, but she is just so committed to Berkeley, and she is the embodiment of what every teacher should aspire to be. And I am honored that I get to work with her, and then when she leaves us, she goes home to her beautiful children who are here today, a set of twins and a daughter and a husband and wife, and you name it, and she does it, and she does it with joy and enthusiasm, and I can't imagine being at Berkeley without you, so thank you so much, congratulations.
Patricia Fitzpatrick.
Thank you. It's my honor, I'm sorry, it's my honor to introduce Patty Fitzpatrick. Ms. Fitzpatrick is our LPTC here at Gibbs, and she has worked so tirelessly, a lot of times it's all behind the scenes, right? So, the work she does is really advocating for children at Gibbs, and she does it all very quietly. She is looking, never looking for any praise, she just always has the child's best interest in the forefront. Patty and I talk on the phone probably four times a day, because she also case manages children, right? And, or is the, you don't case manage children, you are the case manager for children, and she does an outstanding job looking out for her students. She's present in the classroom, she's checking in with teachers, she's holding meetings, she's coming into my office and seeing like, well, is there anything else we can do? I'm sorry to try and notice this is a big ask, but, and she's just such a great person, and just such a nice person to work with, and it's just a pleasure to have you at Gibbs. And I'm just honored that your colleagues see, like, again, Patty's quiet, and we'll go through a meeting, and then at the end, Patty's like, please, second, I actually have something to add. But, you know, she is so, such a great asset to our team, and I just, this is such an honor, so congratulations.
This one means a lot to me personally. A long time ago, I was teaching at David E. Owens, Mr. Adrian's was there, so long ago, but do I drop the color up? Mrs. David's...
I get the opportunity to be here and talk about Patty. What, I need to start with, you know, the word leadership and the word mentorship, because really, coming on board at David E. Owens, a lot of times, along with Ms. Lepage, I feel like Ms. Lepage and Patty really taught me how to do my job. And I'm not kidding, and I really, really appreciate both of them for that. Ms. Adrian's is a force. She's a force in our building, she's a force for our students, she's a force for her colleagues. She has... At home too. She is always able to offer what needs to be done in any given situation. At first, you know, you come on board and you're a principal, and you're trying to listen, and you're trying to listen to 20 different things, but by year three, it just became a matter of going to Patty's room and just asking her, because she was going to let you know what needed to happen for who and when it needed to happen. And I cannot express enough how important she is to our children and to the special ed department at our school, and in general to just math teaching. She is so passionate about the subject. She literally will volunteer to do anything mathematical. Our 20-period day is because Patty is able to think that way and put it together for us, and even edit it basically every other year, which I ask her to do. And she seems to find that fun, so I really, I really do appreciate her and everybody at David E. Owens, since it's been a long time.
This one also means a lot to me because Ms. Adrian's was like, I felt like I was learning from her. I called this gentleman, I was teaching, and so, I mean, he came in, comes in blazing, I think their first year, we went to New Orleans together. Nobody wanted to go with me, that's why I went. Two people, you know, learning together, so this one means a lot to me as well. Mr. Raymond Fittier. Mr. Fittier is district teacher of the year.
So, congratulations to Ray. Ray's had a journey, and we're fortunate to be part of it, you know, working at the middle school, coaching, and being an advisor, and then taking a change and going on a journey for political career, you know, and then giving us the opportunity to work together again, you know, coming up to the high school and working at the high school. So, I'm very fortunate, you know, our staff is very fortunate, our students are very fortunate, because, you know, and also this journey that he's been on, this is a year, like, he's had a banner year, you know, state championship, coach of the year, the clubs and activities that he's running, work with the alumni, you know, the varsity prep camp that happened in the summer to employ students and provide opportunities for that, and there's so much more to come, you know, we're very happy, very proud of his efforts, and he'll be the veteran, one of the veterans now of the history department, which is crazy. So, him and Hershey are going to be the old dogs of the history department, but, you know, like I said before, you know, the mentorship with Mr. Wilson, but also the new ideas that he brings that I'm very excited about and supporting, so I want to thank Ray and the family, so just tell them we appreciate you very much. Thank you, my friend.
All right. I think that is it, everyone, right? A lot of good stuff. All right, everybody, everybody come up. Please, please.
They're going to let you behind the table. Hey, you should get a picture out on the table.
Spelling's alright, did I make a mistake? Check.
Anybody else just saying to their... This is a story, amazing. Thank you all so much. Thank you very much.
Everybody take a few minutes, take a break, everyone wants to take a little.
Many students have been happy to play with this option. Practice games and matches often take up on the direct revenue of compromising health without bringing in school or work. Other students, including myself, who have brought this issue to Mr. Grosso, would greatly appreciate the satisfaction of his ability during his study instead of in class. As if it allowed him to get a hit on homework, study, and productive instead of sat upon time, we are happy for his achievement. So tonight, our decision will be considered being saved as often as in a comprehensive activity to choose to opt out of forcing the focus on performance as a student and happy and better as a school. Thank you, and we greatly wish you a wonderful day.
We have a resolution that we have had to threaten. I'd like to give this to you inside by the board president and myself, and actually have a gold stamp bottom too. You're really probably the proudest things. What we want to give this to, so please come up. I also want to say this, like, uh, this is a really important book. And you're speaking on your class's behalf, which is wonderful. And then now you're averaging your class's behalf, which is really impressive. It came to me, I had this idea of, uh, really front to front, I think, important words here to hear about people. Really important scale, it's really important for student body. I doubt they watch this, but ultimately, all this spreads, but you need to learn from the board and have a view of something that the class, Mr. Grosso, has felt very struggling about. I appreciate those times in the class. I feel the burden of it, but I have a wee bit of most stress than ever, but forgive me. I've had a time to talk to you.
Nice shot. Now, I know you're busy, you do not have to shake at this. Thank you. Good night, wish you. Okay, committee of the whole, I see the votes change to a fifth of minutes from May seventh. Tony, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
I am.
Opposed?
So thank you all for being here and being patient. We have a lot of recognition, it's really important to the school district. I'm gonna start off on the board action with the May-June HIV report. Uh, Milford High School, there were two HIV-338 forms submitted. Two HIBs were investigated by the ABS. All allegations of HIV were founded as it did not meet the criteria. In DEO, there was one HIV-338 form submitted. One HIV was investigated by the ABS, and the allegation of HIV was founded as it did meet the criteria of HIV in one more area. Gibbs in Berkeley, there were no HIV-338 forms submitted. As far as the May suspension report, I'm glad to report that we are down in suspensions, uh, which is excellent. Milford High School had zero students suspended. DEO had seven students were suspended for a total of seven days. Five students each served one day in school suspension. Two students, uh, each served one day of absolute suspension. In Berkeley, two students were suspended for a total of two days. All were, um, in school suspensions, and Gibbs, zero students were suspended. Um, as far as other thing on the agenda that I would like to talk about, the comprehensive equity plan, stakeholder assurance, um, is due between the county and the state. That's something that feels with discriminatory and inequitable practices, and we basically have to match a crazy amount of policies to a lot of Excel worksheet cells, um, about discriminatory practices in how we handle them. And I need the assessment team to look at it. We have all matching policies, so we have no need to do an action plan. They're going to submit that to the county superintendent, and they're going to agree. That's about it. The Portugal trip takes place in the summer. I want to risk this with luck, and as you know, when we talk about this, I need to submit right to the open document. Back in probably October, we talked about insurance, and we are getting insurance, uh, to make sure we're covered. Under personnel, um, I'd like to talk about Mrs. Dilly real quick, um, just to explain this type of, because she's in the NJPA now, um, so she's taking for not being paid all this summertime, so that's why it's under seventeen thousand. In September, when she goes back to her teacher's salary, we supplement that to make it, um, so I thought that was a confusion looking at it, but it's the only way to figure out to do it, and be transparent with her. Diddy, Mr. Leifan, point seven to a full-time teacher. Um, the reason being is, I've gotten a bunch of emails about inequity between Berkeley and Gibbs in terms of the music program, and that's the first thing I have to take care of. Um, basically what's happening is, the orchestra at Gibbs has a zero period, and that's it. They don't do small group lessons or individual lessons. Where in Berkeley, they just do small group lessons, individual lessons, and no zero periods, so there's no full band. So, it's inequity. So, our first order of business is to get it equitable, and then enhance the program from there, and to ensure that we have that equitability and the kids are getting a fair shape. We have some ideas that we've worked out with the principals, uh, to rotate Mr. Leifan back and forth, but make sure Berkeley gets a zero period, Gibbs gets a zero period. They get small group, they get small group. It's only fair. Uh, Dr. Sapper is moving from the Berkeley School. Uh, he was interviewed for the math position at DEO. He is a guru at math. He actually teaches math in college, so he is very well versed. It is very difficult to find a math teacher, so this is a way we are using our resources, uh, to better serve our students. And so, I'm proud of Dr. Sapper for wanting to make that transition. Good news, a lot of good news. Um, we were a state champion wrestling team. We're also a state champion Intuit Hour Finance Challenge. Students participate in the compete against other high schools throughout the nation. Students make over forty investment decisions as they allocate their savings between a multitude of investment options, and practice diversifying their portfolio. They're investing in stocks and everything else. Um, and we are New Jersey State Champions for this Intuit Challenge. So if you go to the website, and you click on New Jersey, it's just New Milford there. So it's really nice. I'd like to thank Mrs. Taylor, uh, their teacher, for affording them this opportunity. We also have another finalist. Mrs. Fenizia is the Chrisville Apple Award finalist, and a representative came to give the school a one hundred dollar gift certificate, as well as her, a one hundred dollar gift certificate. There were only sixteen teachers in the, uh, county who received this award, so congratulations to Mrs. Fenizia. We have Alicia Cho, um, is the Metropolitan Museum of Art High School Internship Program, and she accepted it, which this is very good, because only twelve percent get this prestigious internship. Uh, it will give Alicia an incredible advantage if she chooses to go into profession in this area, we hope she does. As part of the paid internship, paid internship, Alicia will commute to New York City five days a week to work alongside museum professionals. She'll engage in hands-on experience with curators, educators, and conservators, experiencing the diverse careers that exist with one of the largest and most respected collections of art. This is exactly what we want our kids doing, is prepare and then to get these internships, if they're paid internships, that's even better. And if she enjoys it, that's wonderful. If she doesn't enjoy it, she still learns from it, and, and can move forward from there, but at least she realizes it. Now, we did have a special education audit. Mrs. Warren, you're well aware of that. We only had one area that we had to work on, and it's a minor required action regarding communication with case managers, so I don't anticipate any issues with that. Um, graduation, project graduation, Elks made a hefty donation, so I want to thank them, um, make sure that they are, you know, in our gratitude in regards. Um, we also had the Metro Awards, so the New Milford High School Stage Crew was awarded Outstanding Stage Crew for Little Shop of Horrors, and the Metro Awards, if you saw the video, it is like, I don't know, the Tonys or something, right? It is absolutely crazy how they do it, and the kids have to come up on stage, and they're all flustered, and they have to give a speech, and they didn't prepare speeches, so it's really exciting and fun to watch.
Step in your feet outside of it as well, and then someone interviewing them.
Yeah, it's awesome. And then there's little stage acts right in between, the awards, it's like, it's, it's first class, so I'm glad, uh, New Milford could experience that. Uh, what else do we have? Model UN commendations for DEO, so we have a, we've sent somebody to Model UN. Annika Thomas received a verbal commendation. Eden Clark and Yuja Patel received outstanding delegate distinction. So, again, I'm amazed at how many accolades, when we send our kids out, these competitions are getting honored. Devin Ryan, um, stage is on, uh, amongst many honors, uh, was the valedictorian, went to a beautiful breakfast, um, where Devin, you know, received honor, and great speeches, um, about, you know, reflective speeches, and just, one guy said, "The total IQ in this room right now, right, is through the roof," and you're looking around, you're like, "He is absolutely correct." And they're all like, hard-working students with so much potential, and it was nice to be around, great breakfast. He liked the muffins. You forget they're kids, they're still kids. He's eighteen years old, he's valedictorian, he's gone to West Point, and he is obsessed with the chocolate chip muffins. And he ate a lot.
Are you easier? I'll take it.
Yes, that's so funny. Um, okay, two other things happened. We had our academic, athletic, and music awards nights, over one hundred thousand dollars in scholarships, so we thank all the donors for that, and everybody that participated. Most are all thankful that we accept great kids to get these awards. Gibbs and, Gibbs and Berkeley, I don't know if you saw this, there's videos that went out, I'm gonna put it in my newsletter. Gonna be honest, when they first brought this to me, the Ed Foundation paid for it, the guy who was requesting to do this, he's from Oregon. He made two interesting requests. One, he wanted a hundred pair of jeans. Mrs. Torrey, Carrie got most all of them. The other thing was, he was like, "Where can I stay?" He wanted to stay in someone's house. We're like, "We don't really do that in Berkeley." But, so we're kind of like, "What is going on here?" We had to come in and put woodchips on the grass, expose the problem, and the end, I'll put him into this remarkable. Two videos of the five hundred kids from Gibbs getting into a pattern on the ground, they had no idea what it is, it's tied to an assembly, and earth, and everything like that, and then they posed with their different colored shirts, and then the drone takes a picture and a video of them assembling, and it was a trick for Gibbs. And if it Berkeley, it turned out to be a dog. And unbelievable, I'll put it in my newsletter so you can all see it. Well worth the experience and the stress of a hundred jeans and where, where, you know, "How's this guy?" So, really well done, and it just speaks to the opportunities that, you know, when working with the Ed Foundation and the school district, and the principals, and the teachers, and the, the parents getting a jeans and everything else, and doing all this, the woodchips, and we come together to do great things. And so, I'm looking forward to seeing that video. Upcoming events really quick, I know I'm talking a lot. Berkeley and Gibbs Moving Up Ceremony tomorrow, um, there's also a half-day tomorrow. Six twenty, we are off. Six twenty-three is DEO promotion, and six twenty-four is NMHS promotion, uh, graduation, uh, is predicted to be in the nineties. I'm hearing anywhere from like ninety-nine to ninety-five to ninety, somewhere in there. Um, so I'm already talking to Mr. Rigadelli, Mr. Medipelli, to kind of make arrangements about, you know, what can we do to help keep kids cool. All right? That is it for me, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Assistant Superintendent Report, Marla Doxa.
Good evening, everyone. Um, we are anticipating the receipt of our spring NJSLA results. Uh, the on-demand scores will be available to us on June thirtieth. Um, they're not published at that time, but we, at least we'll have, and we'll get how our students perform, and then we will be able to use that information to inform, um, all of our placements, placements and programmatic decisions for next year. Individual score reports will be mailed home most likely this summer. Those, uh, will be mailed to parents and families. Earlier today, I shared with Mr. Grosso a draft, our mock-up of the profile of a graduate that some of our seniors had worked on, um, so we're just gonna fine-tune a little bit on that. I'm very appreciative that we had their help on this, and hopefully we'll be sharing this out maybe this summer, uh, maybe on retreat. Um, we're also anticipating the allocation for our title funding. This is the federal funding, Title One, Two, um, Three, and Four. We were unsure as to whether we were gonna receive funds for next school year, but it looks like all of the signals are coming through to us that we will be receiving the funding. Uh, last year, we received the allocation, which was sent to me. I checked the LA, I haven't seen it yet, uh, but stay tuned for more information on that. And summer assignments, some of our teachers have already shared summer assignments with students already, um, they are posted on the school webpages, or will be by the last day of school, and, um, also under programs on the district page. And that is all I have for tonight.
Great. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Business Administrator Report, Stephanie Kuchar.
Good evening. Um, there's a lot of papers here, so just give me a second. F twenty-four, twenty-five point three oh six, uh, sorry, point three oh eight. Um, we, this was, the current twenty-four, twenty-five school year is the first year that we had a service agreement with the borough for a mechanic. Um, they had hired a mechanic who had experience on buses, and so it was really great this year having that shared service agreement, because, um, we can't afford to have all, any of our buses are off the road at any time for any extended period of time, and it's probably four or five times a week that we're calling everyone from the town, and so we would like to continue that, so that's on for approval for tonight. And then, the other big item that we're looking for approval is, I'm sorry, I should have the numbers down, is F twenty-four, twenty-five point three hundred. And that is to purchase a fifty-four passenger bus. Um, and the reason behind this is, uh, we have a lot of reasons. Historically, we've always, um, purchased buses using financing, and so we're planning over, typically, it would be a three or four-year period, we looked into the financing, and the rates are really not favorable now, um, so it would be well over two hundred thousand if we financed it, and we, our buses are completely maxed out right now, and so if we have a bus taken off the road for any reason, we're scrambling and merging routes, it affects our sports. Everybody knows that we're late, um, for sports, and that's because we transport so many kids in districts with IDPs, and then next year, looking to bring back some Aiden Lou, that we really do need this extra bus. And we sort of toyed with the idea of getting something smaller, um, but it really doesn't make too much sense to get anything smaller than a fifty-four, and just because of the volume that we transported, and we also gives us options for other opportunities for, for students. The other part in this is, when we had looked at buying a bus, the tariffs are gonna, uh, affect the pricing on it. Um, and so if we waited any longer, this price, it's obviously a big bus, and so it's expensive to begin with, it would be even more expensive. And so that's why it's not sort of typical to purchase a bus in June, but because of the volume and because of the district needs, we think that it's a good thing to purchase now that we have. Um, it doesn't require another driver, we have the drivers to drive it, and we'll take more kids, um, off of our contracted routes, and we'll transport them via district busing. Um, and then, I apologize that we had, um, a late addition to the agenda was F twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-three point eight, which is the approval and agreement of CarePlus for substance abuse testing, as well as medical appearances. Uh, this is the first year that we had a partnership with them, um, using their services for this, and everybody seemed to like it, and wanted to cooperate with it, but our current agreement expires on June thirtieth, and so this one would take effect the right first. Historically, we've always called the June meeting the reappointment meeting, because most of our contracts run from July one to June thirtieth, and so this is a pretty big, um, agenda for that. And then also on there, on F twenty-four, twenty-five, point three two, and point three two one, are all of, so point three two zero is all of the students who are currently spending at a district, um, and the costs that are associated with that, and then the point three two one are the students who are, we've received for ESY, and then point two two is the school year. Um, we also are working on our food services program. There is that summer EBT option, um, so those notifications will be going out to parents. The communication will be sent via the principals to all the schools for the summer and for the summer options. We don't actually serve meals over the summer, but there are various sites in Burn County should families need them. Um, the monthly threatening letters get sent that if they have high balances, those are continuing to go out, we'll give another one, um, tomorrow, and then the last one will be next week for the school year for anybody with a high balance. We also have been receiving a large number of families who are requesting to have money refunded, which all you have to do is reach out to me, and we will refund you any money that's left on your student, um, student's account, because graduating seniors, they're not gonna need the money, or they want to transfer it to a sibling, whatever the case may be, email me, I will take care of that and have that, uh, money issued back to you. Uh, I think that's it for now.
Great. Any questions?
Just a comment, um, I-
Oh, wait, not at this time, hold on.
No, no, in regard, no, just regarding to the money. We have to get to- Oh, okay, sorry.
We'll get to it, we'll have any questions. Does anyone before have any questions?
It's the money.
Oh, yeah, no, questions, second question. Thank you. The board retreat was originally on VA, um, VA twenty-four, twenty-five point eight seven was a revision to the board meeting dates, so one of the revisions was to move the June meeting from June eleventh to June nineteenth, and the other revision was to have the board retreat on July sixteenth at seven PM. However, Matt Lee has since left school boards, and is not, and they don't have a new rep that's available on July sixteenth. So, we can have the retreat at the August meeting, which is already scheduled, or we can move the July meeting to either a Tuesday or a Thursday. Um, and I have those dates, so if we can just-
So August twenty-seventh is the, is the, our meeting in August, August twenty-seventh, which is a Wednesday. Paige, you have a question?
A comment. So, one of the largest parts of the retreat or purposes of the retreat is board goals, district goals, and you really don't want to do that in August. So, I, I'll say that we really should do the retreat in July if we can, or early August if there really is. So, because you're, you're, you don't want to do that in August.
Yes, uh, I'm gonna add to that, because then those board goals are going to affect the principals and what they do with their teachers, because it trickled back, you know, so, so we're on the same page. This year was a little bit fragmented this year, because I came in a little bit late, and so it was hard, and I'd, I'd like it just to trickle down nice.
So what was the dates that Jean gave you?
Uh, July eighth, July tenth, well, can I even do July fifteenth? That's the day before.
I have a question. If we moved the date, are we doing it during the day, or are we doing it at the evening?
We could stick to the evening.
It would stay evening. So, because you don't think I'll be working this far.
Is, so there's July fifteenth, July eighth.
Well, you want to see, okay.
We just want to see them now.
If you, because nobody would have, you're not going to have a vacation, each of us are, so the natural move would be to like fifteenth to the same year.
I'm not in a date.
Is everyone okay with July fifteenth? I always thought of that. Can you just give me a hand, you know, okay?
You probably weren't okay with the sixteenth either.
Okay, so who can do July fifteenth, can you raise your hand?
But then we can-
Tuesday.
No.
All right, who can do it? How about we raise our hand? Nicole? Tony? No?
As of now, yes, I can do it.
Andrew?
As of now, yes.
Okay, that is, I'm sorry, the board.
Um, is a Thursday better for you, Joe?
Wednesday's the only day I can do during the summer. But if you have enough people, I can do those. My strike would be, because of the day.
Yeah, to be clear, we had no notice about Matt Lee leaving, like, I actually texted him, and I think that prompted finally school boards to leave me, send me an email saying that I was notified, I was never notified, um, and she, and then she said that I said I wasn't, I didn't tell her the fifteenth, and she picked that date. I mean, I think if we can make it easy for everyone, if we can keep it the same week, since the majority of them will fill you in. If you want to, you can also just send me what you want to add for goals, um, and we can go from there too. If there's something you want to put in there, we'll, we'll speak for you.
Sure.
Okay.
We'll, we'll move it to July fifteenth.
So, did you confirm you're gonna have a quorum, technically, right now?
Yeah. You said you can, everyone except for Joe and John.
And then Andrew should have ended right now.
Ten years.
So that's why I just want to make sure the ten, if you don't count the tentative, so you still have five.
I think so.
Yeah, all right, cool.
Same, fine.
Here's it. Anything else, Stephanie? No? Okay. Um, I'll go back to my line. Any of these on board committee reports?
Uh, yes. Well, I don't know how, like, can I speak openly about any of that?
Not yet, no.
Okay. I do have one, but I'm, I cannot speak about it.
Okay. Nicole, you want?
Yeah, on, um, the board, I shared it out Monday night after the meeting, we had an athletic community meeting, um, and we just did a, Mr. Rigadelli is present, and just did a, uh, spring sports recap, with the highlights of the spring season, that both the girls and boys track team both won their division, um, both coaches were awarded Coaches of the Year. Um, our baseball, softball, and tennis teams both advanced to the States. Um, open play started June sixteenth for some of our fall teams. Some of the upcoming highlights that Mr. Rigadelli mentioned was that in, in addition to Milford Day and Senior Day, which both will be September twentieth, um, he's planning to do a first responders night, um, but that's to be determined still. Um, he also brought out that in the fall, especially when we have, um, games, for example, for wrestling and basketball in the gym, he coordinated an agreement with Mr. Grosso, I think with the police department, if I'm correct, to negotiate like, uh, per diem for the officers to come in.
That's a much cheaper rate, which is fantastic, because it makes it doable, that if we're not paying time and a half for a police officer, it's gonna be one, like, set rate, which is a fair, where it could potentially have been.
And then the last topic that we discussed was the weight room and fitness renovations. Uh, Mr. Rigadelli mentioned that, you know, an estimated cost to renovate the gym would be, not the, the, um, fitness room, would be about anywhere between ninety to ninety-five thousand dollars. Um, he's starting a fundraising campaign over the summer, he's already received donations, and that's a projected, I guess, project for the fall, if the funding comes in. And the rest, I share, so if anybody has any questions or concerns, can we jump?
Is there any other questions right now? Okay. Anyone? Uh, any additional correspondence?
Yes, uh, to accept the correspondence received from Mr. Weinfert.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I seek the motion to open to the public for items on the agenda as outlined in the Milford Board of Education by Law Zero One Six Seven. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. The motion, page second, by John, all in favor, and I oppose. Anyone from the-
Kendra Moore, I was just saying that I had gotten one of those letters, an email or a letter saying that I owed money, but I had sent it like a month ago, and when I reached out to Angela, who's excellent, the food service lady, she, um, said, "Well, where did you send it?" I said, "To the address," and she said, "She went," and it was somewhere in the board's office. So it was there, but, and then she applied it to my account, so I just wanted to make sure there's a process to make sure it gets from when it's received to her. So when I reached out to her to say, "Why did I get this?", I sent a two hundred dollar check, and that's when she said, "Where did you send it?", and she said she found it in the board's office. I was just saying to just make sure that there's like a closed-loop gap, so we don't get those emails, but the check is in the office. That's all.
Perfect. Anyone else in the public? Okay. I seek the mo, oh, wait, oh, I was about to get to it again. I seek the motion to close the ballot, page, second by Nicole, all in favor, and I oppose. Okay.
Heather Rupert. I have something that I wanna bring up that is on the agenda. Do you want me to wait till we get to that section? Or do you want me to bring it up before we go through it?
Not many ways we get to the section. So board action, having a recommendation of the superintendent. I seek a motion for B A twenty-four dash twenty-five, point eighty-five, point eighty-six, point eighty-seven, point eighty-eight, point eighty-nine, point nine zero, point ninety-one. I need a second. Stephanie, all in favor, opposed. Okay. Educational Programs and Curriculum Committee, Stephanie Coffetter.
I make motion to seek approval for C twenty-four dash twenty-five, point forty-one, point forty-two, point forty-three, and point forty-four.
She needs a second. Nicole, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, personnel, having a recommendation of the superintendent. I seek a motion for P twenty-four dash twenty-five, point one twenty-four, one twenty-five, one twenty-six, one twenty-seven, one twenty-eight, one twenty-nine, one thirty, one thirty-one, one thirty-two, one thirty-three, one thirty-four, one thirty-five, one thirty-six, one thirty-seven, one thirty-eight, one thirty-nine, one forty, one forty-one, one forty-two, one forty-three, one forty-five, one forty-six, one forty-seven. I need a second.
This is where?
Oh, okay.
Sorry. So, P twenty-four, twenty-five dot one four two, approval of the following coaches for summer. So this isn't really an issue, I don't have a problem with that per se, but it's something that I wanted to bring up. A few months ago, when we hired other coaches, I was looking at the coaching salary guide itself. And I noticed a few things. Number one, there's some assistant coaches that are hired at a rate that's lower than other assistant coaches. And then I looked into the, where listed as coaches, like summer weight room, fall weight room, whatever it is. And those dollar amounts seem to be commiserable if assistant coaching positions are very close to it. But I think that the time required for these positions is far less than it is of a regular coach throughout the season. And if you extrapolated that to like an hourly rate almost, you know, it seems even more imbalanced. So I'm just bringing that up to the board in general, whether it's something that we wanna investigate, look at, like the equability of these different positions, being different assistant coaches versus, you know, weight room and other things like that. In fact, my math, if it's correct, when translating it to an hourly rate like these, and again, I'm not, it has nothing to do with the people that are involved in this position. But if you extrapolate those weight room positions and other positions like that to an hourly rate, they're paid higher than like home instruction rates. And so I just, I think there might be an equability issue. And so I just wanted to bring it up to the board for consideration. Thank you.
I have a question, and let's, you agree with the response to Mr. Rigadelli?
Does anyone wanna give a response, or?
I just wanna bring up that that's contractual agreement. So we brought it up and that's okay, but there's a contract. And so when we get to that point, when it gets to that point, then you have that discussion. Like, well, we could do something. So we brought it up, but it's not gonna come up for another couple of years.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I just wanna make sure anyone else looked that brought up in June, it's gonna take all the time.
Tony?
My question is regarding, page five, point one two eight. My question is, are, do we have in our bargaining agreement this salary rate for a certificated staff substitute, do we apply?
Can you repeat that?
Certainly. Do we have, is this salary for a substitute in our E S Y program, is this in our bargaining agreement? Is this a rate that we've established for this? Is this a contracted salary? It's the same salary for the people who are performing the task. We're pointing twenty-four people to work E S Y for twenty-five days. We're pointing twelve people to substitute. And everybody's at the same rate. So my question is whether the substitute's rate is within our contract. If I could answer it some way.
Okay. These are certificated staff, they're teachers. So if this teacher on point one two five is not available, another teacher would take that and it is contractual because these are all N M E A members.
Do they have to be certificated in the area that they provide instruction?
They have to be certificated teachers for the, yeah. Yes and no.
Okay.
Like an elementary teacher teaching art is not an art teacher. She's a specialist teacher. But these are all N M E A teachers. That is the contracted rate in the N M E A contract.
So if I can ask?
So they're not like substitutes.
If I can ask a second question. Are these, I'm surprised at the number of substitutes. So I guess my question is, are we anticipating coverage for weeks at a time? Or one day once in a while, you know, unannounced? Because I would say just approve them all as teachers and then make your sign, the rate's the same. That, that's my only question.
Yeah, I mean, it's actually, it's the same kind of thing, right? What you end up doing is that it's, I suppose by doing it this way, probably as a historical practice, by doing it this way, some people know who are the primary designated teachers and other ones are secondary and as backups. But yeah, it's, to your point, they're all paid the same amount. So you could just say that we appoint all these people and then we determine the schedules and then, you know, determine who's the primary and who's the backup.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions? I need a second. Stephanie, Roca?
Mr. Albro?
Yes.
Ms. Melbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Prostra?
Yes.
Ms. Coffetter?
Yes.
Mr. O'Garty?
Yes.
Mr. Law?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Dun?
Yes.
President Dunham?
Yes.
Finance and Facilities Committee, Cheryl Calderon.
I agree. Um, got this. And I seek a motion for the approval of F twenty-four dash twenty-five, point two four six, point two four seven, point two four eight, point two four nine, point two five zero, point two five one, point two five two, point two five three, point two five four, point two five five, point two five six, point two five seven, point two five eight, point two five nine, point two six zero, point two six one, point two six two, point two six three, point two six four, point two six five, point two six six, point two six seven, point two six eight, point two six nine, point two seven zero, point two seven one, point two seven two, point two seven three, point two seven four, point two seven five, point two seven six, point two seven seven, point two seven eight. Point seven nine, point two eight zero, point two eight one, point two eight two, point two eight three, point two eight four, point two eight five, point two eight six, point two eight seven, point two eight eight, point two eight nine, point two nine zero, point two nine one, point two nine two, point two nine three, point two nine four, point two nine five, point two nine six, point two nine seven, point two three, point two nine nine, point three zero zero.
Right, they're gonna double the salary.
That's not a friend. Um, point, point three zero one, point three zero two, point three zero three, point three zero four, point three zero five, point three zero six, point three zero seven, point three zero eight, point three zero nine, point three zero zero, point three zero one, point three zero two, point three zero three, point three zero four, point three zero five, point three zero six, point three zero seven, point three zero eight, point three zero nine, point two three zero. Okay. Uh, no, go on. Three, two, one.
Second toy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Nicole, you have nothing else for, but, Tony, you have nothing else for policy rate? Okay. Any old business? Any new business? Any board member request for additional information? I seek a motion to open to the public as outlined in the New York Board of Education by law zero one six seven. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. Tony, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is anyone else? I seek a motion to close to the public. Page, seconded by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, closed session. It is hereby moved with the Board of Education and directed to executive session. In accordance with provisions, seconded meaning of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two thirty one P L, the purpose of discussion and consideration of matters pertaining to the following subject. Personnel matter, the minutes of the, and legal. The minutes of the executive session being available to the public under the need for confidentiality that will exist. Seek a motion to open to close. Stephanie, seconded by Andrew, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And moving now to the floor. We're not taking any action, we'll come back. So, thank you for coming tonight.